City School Board of Education August meeting. We will stand and recite the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, Sharon, you want to call the roll, please?
Dr. Hoida is absent. Dr. Gase?
Here.
Dr. McBride?
Present.
Mr. Perez?
Here.
Mr. Widman?
Here.
Okay, item two, let's adopt the agenda. There was a addendum, I don't have it on mine, but could you just review that for us, Sharon?
Yes, we have an addendum, and that includes items on the consent agenda under 6.03 employment. We have an additional professional staff resignation, professional staff title funded teacher amendments, substitute teachers, that would be for employment, support staff employment, educational aides, substitute educational aides, a pupil activity volunteer, and a couple of modifications to bus driver contracts for this year. We also have additional donations and grants under 6.04. And under action items, 7.13 approve Wood County Juvenile Detention Center Agreement for this year. 7.14 approve PT Services Physical and Occupational Therapy Agreement for this year. 7.15 approve PT Services Speech and Language Pathology Agreement for this year. That's all I have.
That's all?
That's all.
That's a nice addendum. Okay, so entertain a motion for approval of the minutes or the agenda?
Second.
Discussion? Roll call.
Mr. Widman?
Yes.
Dr. McBride?
Yes.
Mr. Perez?
Yes.
Dr. Gase?
Yes. Item number three, awards and recognition. Bob, I assume that's you? Or Mike?
Thank you, Dr. Gase. Yes, we do have a number of staff and students that are in attendance tonight that we'd like to recognize. First of all, I'd like to begin with our cheerleading squad. We've had a very successful summer, and we have in our attendance tonight the varsity coach Jamie Hepp and the varsity and the eighth grade captains representing their various teams. So just a quick little summary of what they've been up to this summer. The Tiffin Columbian Cheerleading Program is for grades seven through 12, Tiffin City Schools. There are nearly 50 cheerleaders participating in the program. In the summer, the cheerleaders were very excited after nearly two years off of competition. They're back in the competition, competing. And in June, they began their season competing at the Wood County Fair. They made a clean sweep with the middle school cheerleaders, the ninth grade cheerleading squad, as well as the varsity team, all placing first at the Wood County Fair. At the Attica County Fair, the middle school and the ninth grade teams both placed first, and the varsity took second. Next came the Henry County Fair. The middle school and the ninth grade teams placed third, and the varsity team placed second. And the varsity team was the second highest scoring team in the competition, just missing the grand champion by a total of two points. So we're very proud of the team. Coach Hepp and her squad have done a phenomenal job of representing Tiffin City Schools, and we wanted to bring them out tonight and just make sure the Board of Education was aware of their success and how they are representing our schools and communities. So ladies, congratulations. We're very proud of you, and thanks for being here tonight. Let's give them a round of applause. Coach Hepp, if you'd like to say a few words?
First of all, thank you to the Board of Education and our administration of Tiffin City Schools. We're trying to express our grateful in our capacity to support the district for our athletes and our cheerleading program. This is now always true of some cheer teams around the state of Ohio, as it's now recognized as a sport in our state. But our school is true to do that here at Tiffin City Schools. So I always let the kids know that what a reward that is to us to be able to have that opportunity. With that, I've been coaching cheerleading in Tiffin City Schools 25 years, a little bit over, and there are ups and downs and rebuilds in the program. And I can't tell you enough how we are back on that high end and getting there, back in the competition. A lot of people don't know, but in the state of Ohio, they do have a regional and state competition. We used to go years ago as a varsity squad on that is eligible for that, and we will be attempting that again this year to qualify for those things. So we are extremely excited about that, and we do that with limited facilities, as we are in an elementary gym typically for practice, and we never have an entire competition floor, or most places are in a gym, a gymnastics gym that has a whole floor. So our kids kind of turn this way, do it, turn this way, let's try to get in, and try to get on the football field in the weather so we can have a full expansion to be able to do everything that we do in our two-minute routine when we're out there. So we've played very well this summer with a lot of hard things in there that typically schools do over and over on a whole floor. So we take the best opportunity we can and make the best of it. And with that going farther, we are very proud of our cheerleaders and the growth that we have this summer. They started working in June, had worked the entire summer crew, started the football season on Friday night. And with that, I just want to say how amazing, amazing our student section was on Friday night. Our football team did fabulous. I know it wasn't the outcome that we wanted, but wow, was our student section absolutely amazing. So we were very excited about that. It makes our gym easier and a lot of fun, and we do our competition as our reward for being a master's to Tiffin City Schools and being on the sidelines. Our reward for ourselves is to attend these competitions and to do these things. We're very grateful for the opportunity to travel and compete with that. And I just want to let you know, tonight we have our varsity captains at Slay Steinhauser, Andrea, Glenn Necker. And we have our eighth grade captain from the middle school, Ella Conley, and Chloe Hayden. And we also have members of our squad, Faith Necker and Tess Rhodes, along with our two coaches. Like you said, we're a seventh through 12 grade program, which is very unique as well, which I think is why we can do the things that we can do, is we all practice together. And I think that helps our role models for our high school down to our middle school. And we have our middle school, high school coaches, Taylor and Katie Gilligan with us, and we have our seniors here, same names, the others. I'd like to thank the Board of Education and Tiffin Administration for yielding that high school and your school teams the opportunity to compete this summer. Back in the summer, we competed last summer, which probably really stunk, as our team is cool, but many talented athletes who strive to do the best and work very hard on it. Competition season allows me to compete at a higher level while learning and maintaining skills that I have with friends and creating a strong and supportive bond with the team. After our successful season, we are so excited to move on to football season, cheering our boys every Friday night and every weekend. And thank you for the opportunity, and we look forward to seeing everybody Friday night for our first home game.
Absolutely. I have a question, Ms. Hepp. How many competitions do you normally involve in during the summer?
During the summer, we usually only keep the two, the local, but we expanded this year. Not so smart. For Byam, because I switched teaching positions this year, and Billians, and he did that all before we went back to school. So that was, been pretty one of the hottest, I think, every competition was 93. And I do want them to look their best, so I made them wear their long sleeves. From a judging and a coaching standpoint, it can hide a lot of things. So we have to do that. And then in the wintertime, we usually do four to five competitions. We will probably stay at two, five, and six this year with the regionals and the state. If we qualify for regionals, then we move on to the state competition in February. So I just have to share them a lot with dual sports.
Sure.
So we had no practices except for the two regular competition, and then all of our varsity team was there. And it is a very action factor team, very different than what you see on the sidelines.
Right, I bet those are very athletic. I've seen them.
Yeah, so definitely check out all of their skill for this weekend or this Friday night on the track. Our varsity squad really surprised me on Friday night. They didn't practice, they were tumbling pools, and a lot of the instructors went down there. Probably should have watched out a little bit, because sometimes they think they know where they're going, and then somebody steps out, and they get excited over the leg, so. So we have a busy winter coming up. We'll start in November.
Thank you.
And just from my perspective, it was kind of neat seeing you guys on Facebook early on doing those competitions. A lot of them, like in a weekend, I think you guys were traveling quite along with the middle school, but I remember it was hot. So, and then getting the results back and seeing how many people were sharing that. But then the football game, I have to tell you, I got to sit by the student section, and you guys did a phenomenal job. I know some of your cheers by heart by now, but I'm not going to display them. You guys can do that on Friday. But the way you work with the student section, and you had to see the flips and what you said at the beginning, you are athletes. I mean, that takes a lot of work, so.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Emma Charlton. If Emma would come forward. Emma is a senior at Columbian High School, and she also attends Sentinel Career Center in their education program. Emma plans on becoming a K3 Special Education Teacher. She is taking advantage of many CCP courses here, Columbian High School. She's also very busy in a lot of other activities. She volunteers to read for the Read to Succeed Program with the Tiffin City Schools. She's been a cheerleader in grades seven through 10, serving as a co-captain. Emma's been involved in the Tiffin Seneca Heritage Festival, serving as a two-time junior princess, the princess and then queen. And then Emma volunteers with Look Sweet, Eat Sweet, Kiwanis, and the Sharing Kitchen. She also participates here at the high school in the Flag Squad, a member of the National Honor Society, and the Drug Free Clubs of America, as well as Educators Rising. Emma's a member of the 4-H Club in the Blue Ribbon Buckeyes. She's held several offices there, and she's even been awarded the top 20 percent at the state fair. The reason Emma's here tonight, though, is that this year's Seneca County Fair, she received two first-place ribbons and a second-place ribbon, and she is, was recognized as the Seneca County Fair Queen. So we think those are some really phenomenal accomplishments, Emma. We're very proud of you, representing Columbian High School, the Tiffin City Schools, with all those various activities. We wanted to come and have you come before the Board of Education and just be recognized tonight for all your accomplishments. So Emma, congratulations on everything, and thank you for representing Tiffin City Schools the way you do. Let's give Emma a round of applause. If you'd like to say a few words, Emma?
Thank you so much for the opportunity to represent us, and I am honored to be here. I would like to continue my education from being a special high teacher, and as soon to do, I am really inspired to make a talk this night. I just would like to make this school a very good opportunity to align to a major program, so I'm excited.
Absolutely, thank you. Very well spoken. So with that, those are the recognitions for tonight's board meeting, and I'll turn it back over to...
I'm going to keep on for just another reports. So let's move on to item four, the reports, committee reports. Business Advisory Council did meet last Thursday, and unfortunately, I was not able to attend. And I know that, as it is right now, David Zach is assuming the leadership role in the Northwest Career Ready, which is, as you might recall, is our association in bringing together a number of school districts in this region, north central Ohio. And he was happy to announce, I think today was the announcement, a recruit by, he recruited somebody by the name of Chandler Grooms, a young man who's had some experience in teen building, working with youth. And as you may recall, Amy Wood has moved on from Tiffin City Schools. And so she was kind of the leader of the Business Advisory Council and was spearheading the organizing of the Northwest Career Ready. And so David Zach was really excited to bring on Chandler Grooms. He'll be the Workforce Development Manager. And so you remember, not only do we have all of our districts involved, but we've got Vanguard Sentinel and TARA as well that are partnering with TSEP. And so this is quite a large undertaking and quite a bit different than most Business Advisory Councils. And so we'll be doing some things in this large group setting that we couldn't have done before, collecting more data. What we'll try to do is still, as the school year begins, we'll also be doing some more local ventures through the Business Advisory Council, such as our local reach program and some of the other things we've done with our middle and high school students. Meanwhile, embracing the large group as well. Is there anything in the meeting that, I don't know, Bob, you were there at the meeting?
Yes, I was in attendance, and I think you summed it up very well. They just talked with, Mr. Zach talked with Dr. Schumacher from TARA and Mr. Eddinger from Sentinel, and just gave an update over where we're going in the absence of Amy Wood, so.
Okay, very good. That's it, thank you. Finance Committee, Mr. Perez?
Thank you, Dr. Gase. We met last Tuesday and basically went over the check register to provide some oversight. But I think for tonight, we have an action item, which is approve the appropriations for this year. And of note, I think I asked on that one, we carried over one appropriation that we didn't use last time, which was for tennis courts. And I think we only allocated, was it three or 400,000? Do you remember, Perry?
300,000.
300,000.
From the Permanent Improvement Fund. Yeah, that was the estimate.
The only other issue that came up was a reminder that this year, I believe, we reopened the year three of our labor agreement.
Any questions for Mr. Perez? Very good. Support Services, Mr. Widman?
Support Services met on Friday, August the 13th. One of the issues we talked about was the beginning of school, obviously, and the bus routes. And it was announced that we had 44 home-to-school routes, and normally there would be 52, or in years past, there was 52. So you can see there's a reduction in the number of routes. That helps as far as bus drivers, because we have a hard time hiring bus drivers. So that will help alleviate that issue. We are not busing the same radiuses that we were in the past. We currently had 72 students request to be looked at two weeks into the school year to see if we can get them on one of the buses that are in service. So we talked a lot about busing, other than that, some things are going along pretty well. We got some windows that were leaking that we got taken care of. And our next meeting will be Friday, September the 17th.
Thank you, Mr. Widman. Any questions for Chris? I just had one question. You said two weeks. Is that like the period of time they're ferreting out the schedules?
Right, so the intent there was to get the school year started with the current bus routines, and then we can better assess, all right, how many people are actually on the buses, how many people signed up but then decided not to go. And so that gives us a lot of, gives us two weeks to confirm, all right, this is how many seats are open. And then you can reassess, all right, who else wants to be added to that route?
Or like, you know, with different routes that you didn't have, maybe you changed a route from last year to this year, or beginning of the year with a change?
Right, so I am not aware of how we are doing since school started, but maybe Scotty or Mike can give us an update on...
I just, I think, I think I've heard some talk about how, you know, some of the routes are not, you know, maybe they're not able to do what's preferred this year until we figure it out.
Correct. We have a lot of, like, the middle school and high schools are where most of the challenges come from, because we bus two-mile radius only. And the people that are applied to 75 are people that actually live under the two-mile radius but don't have a good way to transfer to get to school. So we will definitely look and see if we can get them on buses.
Okay, so people had covered, been covered last year but not this year because of the change?
Yes.
Okay, so is it possible that some of those might get in if there's open spots?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Scotty, do you know if any of those 72 are the preschool students or not preschool students?
There should not be preschool students because preschool students are qualified through their IEP only.
Very good. Right back at you, Chris, with Vanguard Sentinel.
Right, Vanguard Sentinel met on August the 12th in Fremont. Our, our numbers are up as far as students, so we're pleased with that. We also talked about the Amy Wood and her departure and making sure that the momentum is not lost. They will continue to work with TSEP and TARA to help fund the person that you had mentioned earlier. The other thing you mentioned is that what you're seeing with the Northwest Career Ready is that we're more of a model for the state. I mean, this is a unique opportunity to showcase what's going on. Greg Eddinger and I will actually be speaking at the Leading Age Ohio Leadership Summit on September the 28th to talk about partnering with the business community and the business advisory committees and such. So we're looking forward to that. The other thing they talked about is facility planning. They'll be doing some tremendous renovation work at the Adult Education Building in Fremont, and that's the last part of, basically, a five-year plan. This is towards the end of that plan, so this will be the last component of that. And then they'll begin work on their next five-year plan. So we will meet again next month.
You might not know anything about this, but I was curious as to, you know, I saw where the county commissioners are starting with a, an overall change of the EMS system. And I was curious as to, do we have anything at Sentinel that will have work experience to put high school students in EMS positions? Like as, for learning experience? Is that part of their program?
That's a great question. I'd imagine that part of their, part of their public safety
Right.
would touch on that a little bit. But I also believe their medical careers touches on the, on that part of it, too. So specifically, I don't know the answer to that.
Do you know anything about that?
I don't.
Okay, all right. Well, I was just curious.
But I think either of those two programs would probably touch on it a little bit.
Right, the reason it's important is that I think, you know, the more we go towards a paid position, you know, we're going to have a hard time competing in Centwood County, you know what I mean? As, for paid positions, you've got a lot of area to cover. And like anything, if you have a pipeline of students coming in, it's, you're much more likely to have entry-level people taking that spot and helping, even in the volunteer sense, which are the very...
My belief is that they do have an EMT program, but I think they focus on adults for that one, but I'm going to look into that some more.
All right, very good, thank you. Okay, moving on, Student Representative, Gunther Kissel.
This is the board report over at Tiffin Middle School for the month of August. On the 11th, there is a celebration of life event held for the school therapy dog Kennedy who passed away. The event consisted of speakers who were impacted by Kennedy, as well as other therapy dogs from the surrounding regions. On the 13th, the seventh and eighth grade middle school football teams participated in a preview scrimmage against Gallion High School. On the 16th, the Tiffin City Schools opening day orientation took place. That was for incoming sixth graders, new students, as well as Tornado Academy students who have yet to be in the building. And then finally, the 19th and 20th was the first day of school for all students excluding preschoolers. That's all, thank you.
Thank you.
Do want to note that Annalise and Cole are at a cross-country meet this evening, and that's why they are not in attendance tonight.
Excellent. I don't think we've ever had a, we've had a specific report from middle school? Maybe we have, I forgot about it. That was a, that was nice hearing a report specifically about the middle school.
So one of the things we've, are doing or implementing this year in force has been instrumental in it, is assigning each of them to a building. So what building do you have, Gunther?
The middle school.
There you go. See, that's the middle school.
Mr. Shawberry?
Shawberry has Noble, all right, so.
And I think it's instrumental, but I think some of us on the board would like to know how this board member is starting to develop this year. It's very different than we've ever done before. In fact, I haven't been aware of what's been going on with it. So if you guys do some things like assign buildings to them or keep all four of them at meetings, it would be nice if the rest of the board knew.
I think we talked about, did we not, Jeff? Yeah, we talked about committee assignments, I think. Might be in the minutes somewhere. All right, let's see. Okay, moving on, Superintendent Assistant Superintendent's reports.
Thank you, Dr. Gase. For your consideration tonight and your packet are a couple of job descriptions. The first one is a school psychologist assistant. Last spring, when Mr. Smith assumed his responsibilities as the Director of Special Education and Student Services, that created a void with our school psychologists position. Mr. Smith and Mr. Pugh went through several interviews, and I'm sure you're all aware, but psychologists, school psychologists are in short supply and high demand, and they're very hard to come by, especially the good ones. Mr. Smith and Mr. Pugh conducted several interviews and could not pin somebody down that met up to the expectations that they had for that position. So in talking with Mr. Smith, now that we have to contract some psych services, which is also part of the agenda tonight, he thought that if we hired a school psychologist assistant to take care of a lot of the paperwork and the minutia items that go along with that position, that would really cut into the amount of hours that the contracted school psych would work, saving us significant money at the same time. So that is how that position came about, and the job description is, again, is a part of your packet. Are there any questions on that one before I move on? Okay, the second one is the Director of Special Programs and Communications. That is the position that Amy Wood previously held, and in talking with Dr. Zoller and the work that Amy Wood in this position has done for Tiffin City Schools in the past and will continue to do is very valuable. There's no doubt about it. With the grants, especially... With the grants especially that Amy secured and that we're continuing on in two years, three and four, and some of those grants. And with some of the high school initiatives as well, with, with Canvas and step, or school quality improvements and all of those different things, as well as we wanted to add in a communications piece to this position, to really work with getting the message out about Tiffin City Schools, celebrating what's good in Tiffin City Schools. So we added that as part of the position as well. That would be a director position. And again, that job description is all part of your packet tonight. Are there any questions on that job description?
Bob, can I rewind back to the, the school psych assistant?
Yes.
Just one of the pieces on there, so it does have a component of observing students in the classroom?
Yes.
Is there gonna be training for that? Because it looks like it's bachelor's degree needed. Is there gonna, do you know, like, the training or the requirements are gonna be around that?
Yes. I'm gonna defer that to Mr. Smith. I know he's here. So let me turn to him real quick. Mr. Smith?
Yeah, so we'll definitely provide feedback and guidance in terms of what we're looking for, in terms of observations. Any, Molly and I will work really closely with what our candidates have been and provide some pretty clear feedback on exactly what we're looking for out of their positions. Nice thing is we both have a very similar style of evaluations, so that should be a pretty easy transition for that person.
So are they completing evaluations or observations?
Observations. So they'll be completing, like, observations, sending out consent paperwork, following up on invitations, things like that. The other piece that Mr. Bows didn't get a chance to touch on, but they'd also be able to provide some small group interventions as part of our RTI models. That's a piece that Molly and I have attempted to take on more pieces of the RTI support. And so that's a piece that we can utilize that position for, as well as to expand that small group intervention in our RTI system as well. So we really do get a really good bang for our buck with this position.
Any other questions for myself or Mr. Smith, since he's here? All right. And the last thing is just a real quick update with, with COVID. You know, as, as we all know, this is still a very fluid situation. We're monitoring it very close in communication with our health department. Currently, we have two staff members that have tested positive with COVID, and we have three educational aides that are quarantined because of contact tracing. To my knowledge, and Dr. Zoller and I were talking about this before the meeting, to my knowledge, we've, we've had one student test positive, and that was before the school year even started. So, so that student and the contact traces that went along with that are all, all accounted for, so to speak. So we continue to talk with, with Ann Goon at the Health Department and, and keep our pulse on as best as possible. And like I said, it's a fluid situation, as we all know, and we'll continue to monitor as we move forward. Any questions? Thank you.
Thanks, Bob. Let's see, moving on to Dr. Zoller.
Thank you, Dr. Gase. And I wanted to provide an update to the board with what's going on with the Tornado Academy. So I have asked Jennifer Kuhn if she would provide some information and just kind of give a little bit of an update on the Tornado Academy. So Jen, at this time?
Absolutely. At this time, we have 141 students as part of our Tornado Academy. This is up from last, our last board meeting. That encompasses 54 elementary to middle school students, and then we have 87 high school students. Presently, we have 23 students who are being served through IEPs, and we also have a few that are also identified to be gifted. Just a reminder, this year, it is our intent that we have students in the program, that it is a successful program for them, so we want to make sure it's a good fit. Unfortunately, that has meant that we have had to turn some students away. But I have encouraged them to get fully involved within their program, within the school or another program, and then upon showing success, then they can reapply for the next semester. So we're looking again to make sure that we're providing a successful environment wherever our students go. I've started to look at our open enrollment numbers, and I would say, in looking at the numbers today, it looks as if we have, within the last five years, this, last year was the highest that we have had. We have not determined the count for this year yet. We're still trying to establish where all of our students are at, just like many other schools, and we can't determine that until all of the schools are in session. So we know where all of our students have ended up. But in regards to our students going out, I did see where we have declined the number of students who have left our district in the last two years. So it'll be interesting to see. Last time you had asked about funding and where we were at with that. That's a very difficult question because the state is undergoing changes, and we don't know what the funding's gonna look like for our school system or any school system. But if we were to look at the numbers that we've had in the past, in years past, if we were to have those 141 students leave our district, we would be losing $423,000. So I think that's something really important to keep in mind, that we're, as a district, we're making a stand for excellence, we're providing support for those students, and we're encouraging families to be involved. All of that started last week when we did our orientation meetings. And I really want to thank our tech department, who has done an exceptional job, not only getting our students and our teachers ready within our buildings, but helping us to get those students online ready also. So, any questions?
How, how, how much tech involvement is there? Is this something that we have properly staffed for?
I would say in years past, we did not have the staff for it. I think it's the initiative that we've had along the way to increase the staffing, because as a district before, we were not one-to-one. And so we've gained one-to-one, which has required additional work for everyone. And then, of course, having students off-campus, it causes a little bit of issue every now and then in regards to filters and trying to figure out and establish how to help those families within their homes. So there is a lot of work that needs to be done. And if we didn't have the staff that we had, that we currently have, we definitely would be not able to service our families in the capacity that we are. So financially, yes, I could see where it would be very difficult to maintain a program like this if we were not able to sustain the staff that we have.
Thank you. Any questions, Jennifer? Thank you very much, Jennifer.
Thank you, Jennifer, and thank you, Bob. Continuing on, I just would like to provide a very quick, high-level update to the Board of Education on the recent, I guess, transition survey that I made available to staff and community. And as you know, since beginning my transition into the district in July, I've been very busy trying to meet with as many people as possible. Staff, community members, parents, as well as members of the Board of Education. And have been using some questions that I prepared as, as a guide for those conversations. There's a hard copy of what I'm gonna present at your, at your seats here tonight, and I think for most of the administration as well. But I, I wanted to, to just share with you some of the, I guess, results of the survey. And again, this is a very high level. This is not really a scientific survey. It just was meant to get some feedback, some, some, some objective data from the conversations that I've been having, give people an opportunity to have their voice shared and provide some feedback. So as you know, I did meet with all, all five members of the Board of Education individually for conversation. So I certainly appreciate your taking the time to meet with me during that, during those meetings. I've also been able to meet with, or through the survey, provide, make this available to about 70, about 60, over 60 people from the, from our staff participated in the survey. And then as well as, we had about 10 community members participate. So what, what I'm gonna share with you is just really a very rough summary of what those results were. And of course, this will be made available to the Board of Education, so you can read these comments for yourself. What I tried to do was, was just, you know, summarize to the best of my ability what their responses were. So kind of fading in and out here with my PowerPoint. But I'm kind of calling this just listening, learning, and leading is what my transition really is all about. So as you're aware, I'm gonna try this again, Tim, it keeps, see if it'll stay with me. Get to this slide here. I, I came up with 10 survey questions that I used. And essentially, you know, these were the, the questions that I used to guide these conversations with people that I came in contact with. You know, what are your expectations for me? What would you focus on first if you were in my shoes? And then, you know, what do we need to do as a district to make the Tiffin City Schools really the premier learning community in the state of Ohio? And then, you know, a little bit more specific, who are some of the people that you believe are the most respected employees on the staff? Who are some of those key external stakeholders that I should get to know, be aware of? And then a little bit of historic perspective. What are some of the things that have happened in the last three years that you're most excited about? What are some of the things that you're most disappointed in that happened in the last three years? And then what obstacles or barriers do you see that I need to remove so that you can be successful? What's your level of commitment? What are you willing to do to help make this transition a success? And then if there's anything else that, that I didn't ask, that they felt compelled to share with me at this time. So that was my basic template, and here's what I learned, you know, from the survey. So in terms of, I kind of summarized the first three questions, looking at what the expectations that people have of me, if they were in my shoes, what might they focus on? And then what might it take for us to become a premier learning community? So what came up over and over and over throughout the course of these conversations was the importance of, of building positive community relations with the community. So that really kind of was a very common theme throughout all of these conversations. So community relations really, I think, is gonna be a priority for me. With the emphasis on building trust and credibility with the community, and the staff, as well as our student body, and everybody. Obviously, things that have happened in the past, in my seat, with previous superintendents involved, some character-related issues. People are looking for someone with high moral and ethical standards of behavior. Obviously, there was an absence of leadership through the various transitions and interims in terms of, of a more permanent solution at the time that people talked about. So we know that that is very much on the front and center of people's minds. People talked about the desire to have transparency, better transparency and more communication from the superintendent going forward. People also talked about there being somewhat of a morale issue with our staff and with the district in general. So looking for someone to establish a positive climate in work, in our, work towards building a positive culture in our schools and in our district. People are looking for stability, and I know that there's been a lot of turnover the last several years. And looking for some stability in, in the superintendency that will have a positive impact on the overall progress of the district. Looking for someone that will maintain high visibility in the schools, in the community. Someone that will address some of the challenges related to the district's finances, as well as facilities issues. And then in, in someone working that would, is willing to work together to make sure that we continue to provide a challenging and a robust curriculum, both for our academic, as well as for our career pathways, and working towards some of those desired outcomes that Dr. Gase talked about with workforce development in the greater Seneca County and community. So those were some of the themes that I picked up on in terms of how people responded in the survey. Specifically related to question four, talking about who some of those most respected staff members have been in the district. And very pleased to see Bob's name listed up there. Bob was highly referenced throughout the survey, as well as Jennifer Kuhn. And that speaks very highly of the job that they did through the course of these last several years, filling in some of the gaps. Also, one of our teachers, Chris Mansour, highly thought of in our community as, as being one of those most respected staff members. Sharon Perry, our treasurer, her name came up quite frequently, as well as Forrest Trisler, our high school principal. Pat Smith over at the board office, a longtime, long-serving member of our staff. And then just in general, a lot of, a lot of responses were just more generally speaking towards our principals, our building secretaries, the teachers in the buildings, and then a number of individuals were mentioned throughout the course of it. But, you know, not enough to include everybody's name on the list. They're included in the survey. We had over 50, 50 different individual names that were referenced in the survey. But these were the ones that kind of came up over and over and over, and I wanted to highlight tonight. So, and then in terms of the external stakeholders, who people suggested that I speak to, they said first and foremost, the citizens in the community, the, the registered voters. Because obviously, they're the ones that are gonna determine the future of the school district. So certainly want to engage with them. Certainly, our parents are important. Strong emphasis on our local businesses, small business owners. Mayor Montz was referenced consistently, as well as being a key external stakeholder. Bryce Riggs saw in the survey, he was listed as Mr. Tiffin. Oftentimes, I know in his work with the chamber, so he's very active in the community. I believe I've established the beginning of a very good relationship with both Bryce, as well as David Zach, who runs our Tiffin-Seneca County Economic Development Partnership. Very active in the community there. Then as well, our, our other educational partners, Heidelberg University, Tiffin University, Terra Community College, Vanguard Sentinel, as well as the North Central Ohio ESC. So we're very fortunate to have all of those educational partners in our community as well. And then again, just very generally, our teachers, kind of senior citizens were identified as a little bit of a separate stakeholder group that we need to be mindful of, that they, they are a, a special group of, of people in our, in our community, that we can't forget about them. And then certainly the media, Dale Dupu and his work with his, his newsletter, as well as the folks with the Advertiser Tribune. And I have met with those folks as well. What are you excited about in terms of the district? Well, people I think are looking for this as an opportunity for a new beginning in terms of moving forward. People continue to talk about, we have a great staff, we have great principals, we have great teachers, great classified support staff, we have a great student body. We have high expectations for our students and staff. So there is a culture that, that I think we can build upon of high expectations and excellence and success. I think the Tornado Academy has been a, a very good recent development that people are excited about. Not every school district that I see is continuing on with providing an online option or an online choice for students. And I'm really proud that Tiffin City Schools is making that available to students and, and parents. The work that we're doing with workforce development, I think, is a positive. All of the inroads we're making into developing a more robust career and tech opportunity and offerings for students. There's a long history of community support in the Tiffin City Schools, and I think that's very apparent, and that is ready and, and able to be resuscitated here very, very shortly. So I think there's a very much a future orientation in terms of looking forward, not looking past, and that the Tiffin City Schools has a great story to tell. And we want to continue to, to build upon that. In terms of some of the, the more- In terms of some of the the more more recent disappointments, and again, these are, these are not anything I don't think that surprises anybody. These are all things that came up in our conversations with the board. There have been leadership issues with the board and superintendent, just that whole turnover. People are looking for stability there. Communication, looking for, you know, this to be something that we can improve on moving forward. People talked about disappointment related to the most recent levy failure for the operating levy this past spring. And then I think there's a lot of concern around the state of our facilities and the condition of our buildings. Again, not a new piece of information. We know that there's a lot of work to be done in that area. People looking for, you know, planning in terms of the future. The issue with the land property acquisition did come up in our conversations as something that they'd like to see a little more transparency related to that from their perspective. Again, I alluded to that there, there does seem to be an element of morale around the district that people are looking to try to turn the corner, turn that back in the right direction. Communication continues to become an issue. Fragmentation in the district, I think, was something that surfaced in the course of our conversations as well as this issue of trust and credibility. So we've, we've got some opportunities here for areas of growth and improvement that I'm looking forward to engaging in with the community. Terms of the next steps, I think, you know, I will continue to engage in this conversation of listening and learning and then using that to fuel my leadership. I want to build on the excitement that I think that we had at our convocation. You know, the focus was on celebrating what's right in the world, celebrating what's right with the Tiffin City Schools and using that as a theme this year to really tell our story. As I said, I think we've got a lot of great news and positive things to tell that are happening in our schools, and we just need to do to reach out and to get that message Addressing some of the challenges, you know, I want to engage in a strategic planning process this fall. I'll be sharing more with the Board of Education and the community about how I might envision that taking place. Certainly, our finances and our facilities are an important component of our future planning. We need to get some plans in place to address some of the, both the short-term and long-term challenges and needs around those pillars. Engagement is going to be a major focus of mine, you know, at every level, student, parent, staff, as well as community. Communication is going to be an important theme in terms of how we move forward. So I look forward to really engaging in in that conversation. Again, it's, it's, it's August. Feels like it's October, November from my perspective. It's a little bit of an early start of the school year, and I feel like we've been, we've been doing a lot already. I know we've just opened up our school buildings, but I think we've got a great opportunity this fall to really dig in and get some good solid traction in all of these areas. So again, just wanted to present the Board of Education with just with some objective, tangible criteria and results of of the kind of conversations that I've been engaged in throughout the course of these last several weeks. I appreciate the boards availing me the time to begin this process in July. I think it's enabling me to really hit the ground running here and get things up and going here at the start of the new school year. So with that, I would just give the board an opportunity at this time, if they would have any comments or questions that we might be able to respond to at this point related to this transition piece that I've shared tonight. So Dr. Gates, I'll turn it back over to you.
Sure, yeah. I had one question, well, actually a couple of questions, but how many respondents were here?
We had about between 60 and 70 staff members respond. We had about 10 or more community members that responded. And then, of course, I had individual meetings with the board, board members.
The 60 to 70 staff and the 10 community or the ones who answered the questions and?
Yes.
Okay. And that was like, did you send that out by mail or?
Yeah, that was, that was made available to all our staff through Survey Monkey, through electronic.
So all the staff was made available?
They had an opportunity to participate.
And what about community? How did you, how did you?
Community was more selective. I did not send out a mass, you know, link to our survey to the community, really used more some of the the networks. I, I leaned on David Zach and Bryce Riggs from the Chamber and from the Economic Development Partnership. And they identified some key community partners that we kind of selected to participate in the survey.
Yeah, I found it interesting that, you know, looking at that, it wouldn't, it wouldn't seem, it's the same district that now has brought in, what, Jen said 100 some people formerly were out, out, electing to leave the district and now they come back? Yeah, so that just didn't seem to jive with what the reality is. The parents are making the choice to come back.
Absolutely.
And yet, we're hearing that we're not delivering a good product. How does that jive?
Well, I think, I think this dealt more with some of the things that happened, you know, in the past and some of the the dynamics around.
So the parents can forget about it, but the staff have. Is that, is that what you're saying?
Well, I don't know.
Well, I mean, because it's telling me like this, the, the community has seen a good product and they're bringing students back in. That's what the dad, that's what, that's what I'm hearing, like from Jen.
I think that's reflected.
That's what the numbers actually reflect.
That's, I think that is reflected in the survey.
That's all I want to say.
But just to speak to that, I'm not, I don't know if I want to make some of those generalizations because, like you said, it wasn't, you know, it's not scientific. He was really just trying to, I don't want to put words in your mouth, but trying to get a feel for like what's out there, anecdotal data. I'm not sure that we have a full sampling, but getting an idea of like places to start, where to dive in. And I think one of the things that is beneficial and is highlighted in this is that we are keeping our tornado academy, which allows us to keep some of those families in the district. But that doesn't mean that we don't have areas to to grow in.
Absolutely, absolutely. I think there's a lot of room for growth, but there's also a lot of, there's a lot of success that the district has achieved. And I think it was recognized in the survey that we want to continue to build on that success because there is, you know, obviously, I represent the transition coming in. And what I'm hearing is we don't just want to set all of the the things that are working, those successful programs and initiatives that have been established. We're not just going to set those aside and, you know, start from scratch. There's a lot of good things that we can build upon, and we want to keep going.
Dr. Zaller, how many, how many, you said more than 10 community members? How many would you say you you polled? How many did you send out of the community members? Did we get 100% response from community members or 50%?
I, 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 I expected a higher number, quite honestly. Because I, I know just within even the kind of some of the key community leaders that serve on TSEP and some of these other committees, I mean, that's, those are pretty large numbers of key community leaders, you know? I expected a better response, quite honestly. But I do know the mayor, you know, was involved. He responded.
We sent it out with 50, we got 10. We sent it out with 20, we got 10.
Yeah.
50, 50 percent.
Dr. Zaller, I have a couple of questions, maybe just one. In terms of your presentation, you had, I think it outlined a plan to have a convocation, and then it said strategic planning, finance, and facilities. When do you foresee being able to do that and being able to involve the community in terms of the actual, you know, strategic planning with our facilities and our finances?
I would envision that being a major project initiative for this fall. It's going to take, you know, to do a comprehensive process, it's going to take a little time. It's not something that I envision happening in a couple of weeks. I mean, it's going to mean involving a pretty significant number of key community leaders as well as staff members. I mean, this is going to be multiple stakeholder groups that'll be represented on the, on this committee. There'll probably be some kind of steering committee. There'll be subcommittees that come off that I envision the finances and the facilities being subcommittees that will be represented in a strategic plan. And they're, they're, they may, you know, I could, I could envision the facilities spinning off into another master facilities planning process and developing a comprehensive master plan for the district. So these are big planning initiatives that are going to take a little time. I would expect that that would work its way through the fall and probably into the spring before we have some kind of final product that would be presented to the board and voted upon.
And the reason I ask that is I know that later on, we have an agenda item regarding a contract involving tennis courts. And this has been an issue that's been going on for a while. And my concern is that we somehow have decided to move on with this plan when we haven't given you the opportunity to put together this whole plan to see where everything fits and to do the strategic planning and to see where everything fits. So that's why I want to see where timelines are in terms of where we're going.
Yeah, I think, I think related to what's on the board agenda today for the tennis courts, certainly what's being recommended is not committing us to any final decisions on, you know, where those tennis courts are going to be located, you know, what the scope or the scale of, you know, the, you know, the plan to replace them would be. I think what, what my understanding is, is that we are at a point in time where we, something needs to be done about the tennis courts. I don't think anybody would necessarily argue that fact. I mean, I, I've been down there with Mr. Daniels. I've looked at him, you know, it's, the damage has pretty much been beyond repair. And we're at a point where we can't continue to put good, good money into those and and try to just Band-Aid them for the future. So I think it is prudent at this time to involve our architects and start doing some feasibility studies and moving forward with whatever that next iteration and solution for the tennis courts is going to be. I think that still all could fall within the umbrella and under the guise of a, of a master plan and a strategic plan and a master facilities plan. So what's being recommended tonight does not lock the Board of Education into any solution going forward. It just, it continue, it just keeps the ball moving forward that we've got to deal with this and we can't just, you know, punt this again or set it aside because we're losing
Back to the, the strategic plan, you talked about the, the really wide scope you want to do. I want to be sure that, and I, I believe you said these things when we met, but with that, that really comprehensive strategic plan, are you also going to be including these stakeholders that you heard on the survey? So like citizens and voters, parents, senior citizens, those pieces? Are you, are you planning to bring them in on the process?
Absolutely. I mean, I think all, all of our various stakeholder groups need to be represented. So yeah, I mean, this is a, it's a cumbersome process. It's, you know, it's, it's, it's a big, it's a big group of people. And it's, it's not necessarily always going to be the fastest moving process, but I, I really, I really believe strongly in the process that we need, if we do the process right and we get the buy-in and we get all of the, the good ideas and the, the input that we need from the community on the front end, it'll make the actual implementation of whatever the plan ends up looking like. It'll make it much more feasible and much more likely that it'll actually get implemented in a, in a, with some fidelity that'll actually accomplish what we wanted to accomplish.
Absolutely. Thank you.
In that regard, then, do you foresee that would also address the question as to what we do with the land that was on there?
Absolutely. I think, I think we need to look at that and to think that that needs to be part of the conversation. I mean, that's a resource that the district has at this point in time, and that needs to be part of the conversation. Okay, if there are no other questions about that, I'll move on and just conclude with a few brief remarks about our opening. I again want to thank the board, I want to thank our staff for the great work that they have contributed already in getting the school district off to a great start. I, I would liken or characterize where we are at this week, starting our, our, our first full week, really, with, we're kind of where things normally are with a typical school year. We are working through some scheduling, you know, issues that happen every year in our buildings with students and staff. So those scheduling issues, that's just par for the course this time of year, transportation issues, working through the bugs of those types of systems. So I'm happy to say that we are very, you know, back somewhat to a normal type of an opening for the school year. As, as Mr. Bose alluded to, we do continue to monitor the COVID situation closely. It is a very fluid situation. We believe we are, we've, we have protocols and, and policies, procedures in place that will enable our schools to operate in a safe and healthy operation. But, you know, as things change, we will, I'm sure, you know, adjust with whatever we need to do in terms of, to be able to provide those, the state, the safety measures that we expect for our students and our staff. So I will keep the board, I'll keep you updated and notified if anything changes along those lines significantly. We were able to dodge a couple early morning fog delays, I think. Coming back to Northwest Ohio, something that I'm getting used to again, that we didn't really have these in Cleveland, two-hour delays, fog delays. But I appreciate Mr. Mr. Daniels and Mr. and Randy being up, you know, very early to keep me abreast of what's happening with the roads. But so far, so good related to, to that. So really, other than just thanking our staff for the work that they've done in making our school, I think, get off to a great start of the school year. There's nothing else that I really have to share at this time related to the opening that just we're, we're glad to have kids back in school in person, getting off to a great start this year. So thank you.
Thank you very much, Dr. Zaller. Move on to item 4.03. Mr. Daniel?
Yes, I'd like to report that the Chris Schenk LLC was the low bid of the three companies I contacted about tearing down the satellite. And obviously, they started that yesterday. It is pretty flat right now. They got the floor and the foundation to dig out and haul in the dirt and fill it in. We'll have a nice grassy hill to watch a football game from for a while. Any questions on the satellite removal? Moving on to the Garmin Miller contract, I am recommending tonight that we pass this with Garmin Miller so they can work with chem engineering to look at this valley down in here and see what is the best location for our tennis courts if we so move forward at the time after they evaluate. This will help put together preliminary design, engineering, utility review, and options for probable costs. And it will get us quite a bit of stuff. There's quite a bit of excitement between the athletic director and the tennis coach. They have some big plans on fundraising to help cover this. So they're very excited about moving forward, but like we said.
So you say they see this as a community-wide effort?
Yes, I know he's been in contact with the other schools within the area.
I mean, really, there's really very little tennis access in the city of Tiffin now.
So there's been some pretty good preliminary talks. Any questions about that?
Yes. Regarding the tennis court process, I remember when this started originally, I asked about replacing the courts where they were at years ago, and they said they couldn't replace them there because there were plans to move them somewhere else. And now we're looking at probably moving them somewhere else. The question I have, though, is we currently have five and they cannot be repaired where they're at. The posts are like already, it's, it's.
They would have to completely tear out and start over. So no matter where we, if we put five courts anywhere, it's going to be the same price.
Right. And so the question is, the proposal I saw for Garmin has on there that the district has decided we want eight courts. I could deal with five, maybe six, but realistically, Norwalk built five for, I think it was $400,000 to $500,000. And I think the preliminary talks that I saw in support services were lights, a pavilion, and other facilities. I think originally, we talked about using the middle school facilities. And then there was also talk about, well, we have to be careful with the design because it could interfere with the plans to build the high school annex down there. And I mentioned this at support services, I'm not familiar with any plan to build a high school annex. I don't think the community or the board has decided that since the levy failed. And so my question is, can we structure the Garmin contract in a way that we are presented with several proposals, one for five, six, or eight courts? You know?
I'm sure the, the subcommittee will, the. I'm sure the, the subcommittee, well, the athletic director, me and the tennis coach can parlay that to whatever we need and work with dollar figures is what we want to do. I know Tiffin University is very excited about the project because if you end up with eight tennis courts, you can host league meets.
Right, but then I think we want to know how much they're willing to, able to, to kick in towards it. If courts are about a hundred, if they're about 100,000 each, we would be looking at 800,000.
Correct. And that, that's why the purpose of involving, we need to, if we do this preliminary service, it gives us the budgetary numbers to start asking for the donations or getting the support of the community.
I, I would just add that, you know, anytime you get into a design situation, you always want to provide alternative bids. So I think what, what Mr. Daniels is, is alluding to is, yeah, the feasibility study, that's a separate issue. We're not putting this out, you know, for bids right now. When we get to that point, it'll be based on the feasibility study, but you know, we, we could put out a separate bid package for five tennis courts, for six tennis courts, for eight tennis courts, for an additional pavilion, for all these different, you know, additional enhancements to the facility. And that would all then be based on the, our ability to raise the funds or to, you know, budget for the project. So I think that's a separate issue down the line that's not really related to what's being recommended tonight.
And Dr. Zoller, I think my concern is that I don't want to keep pushing this off for the grand plan when they eventually need to, we need to get this done sooner than later, you know?
So can, I just want to be sure that I understand. It, it sounds like this is just starting the process to see like where our options are, what our options are, and that you are hoping to tie that into what, what the, the, the long-term plan is and making sure that we're not building things and then having to move them or address those things. And this doesn't tie us into building eight or building, you know, extra facilities with it. It's looking to see what our options are.
Correct.
Absolutely.
I do have one additional item is I did receive word from Brian Cole of the track company. The insurance company between the asphalt paving and their insurance company has come to an agreement to replace our track starting next late May, early June. So.
Thank you, Mr. Dan, thank you, Dr. Zoller.
Thanks, Scott. Okay, we'll move the meeting back over to Dr. Hoita.
I'd first like to apologize for being a few minutes late. And number five, opportunity for the public to address the board. Each person addressing the board shall give his or her name and address. If several people wish to speak, each person is, each person is allotted three minutes until the total time of 30 minutes is used. During that period, no person may speak twice until all who desire to speak have had the opportunity to do so. This period can be extended by a vote of the majority of the board, president voting. And would anyone like to speak?
Anyone? This is too. It's not. It works. The dynamic of the team must be very dry. Been quite a bit of discussion about that in 7.9, regarding the Garmin Miller contract and familiar with it. Enjoyed working with that during my tenure on board and I appreciate the need for tennis courts. Although you can take one look at me and realize I've never played a set of tennis and I'm a fan of the sport, and I've been feeling good facilities. And I'm here to tell you that in my humble opinion, this is the wrong time for this project. This board does not have a long-range plan for anything, including facilities. And before you plant another project, another brick, another block, or any more asphalt anywhere on school property, you need a long-range plan. This is not a public project, Dr. Gase. The public is not saying this is a great idea. The public doesn't know about this. And the proposal that you have before you tonight is very specific. I think Mr. Perez read it. On page three of the Garmin Miller contract, this is not a, we're not out there looking for what's right or what's wrong. They were given some very specific parameters. Garmin Miller and Associates will provide these design and engineering services to Tiffin City Schools to evaluate the district's desire to add an eight tennis court facility and pavilion to their existing campus to the north of the existing middle school building. Reference to GM proposal letter dated 8/11/2021 for additional information and detail on the scope, schedule, and compensation for the feasibility study. And this is our problem as a district. This has never been discussed at a board meeting. The public knows nothing about this. And pretty soon you're going to pay $15,600 for a proposal. And you're going to get drawings and diagrams for tennis courts when we're going to be in deficit spending next year. That's the, the forecast. So I, I just got to ask, what are we doing to take care of that money issue? And why are we spending money to move tennis courts? Because that's what this proposal is all about. It's not about repair. That's not what this is about. I get that the tennis courts need to be fixed. They needed fixed six years ago when I was on the board. It was one of the first things that we discussed in support services my first year on board. And we're right where we were. And I get that something has to be done. But this proposal has a location and a number, and I don't know what a pavilion is, but I'm not sure it's appropriate to be discussing it when we're in the financial situation that we're in. What happened to discussions about school builders and repairs and these doors and windows that we talked about every single year I was on board? We're still looking at the same doors and windows that I was told needed replaced when I started here. The term that I use is optics. The optics for this are not good right now. And any suggestion that the public is in full support of this is just balderdash. It's just, it's just not accurate. They don't even know about it. It might turn out to be a great idea, but it may backfire too. And people may be asking themselves, why are we spending money on new tennis courts in a new location when we're being told at the same time that we've got schools to build and facilities to fix? And by the way, we've lost an operating unit. So I'm just going to ask you to consider just the optics, if you will. If you want to call it the politics of it, that's fine. Use whatever term you want. It's not that the project's a bad idea. It's not that the idea is a bad idea. It's the timing that seems to be bad. Can we please get a long-range plan, as Dr. Zoller suggested together, and decide what our priorities are? And if tennis courts and moving them and putting up a pavilion happens to be priority number one, so be it. My guess is that's not going to be priority number one when we do a long-range plan, regardless of the architects we have. I appreciate the work on it. I appreciate the expertise of Garmin Miller. I appreciate the tennis team, the tennis coach. And I've talked to Dan Hartzell about this. In fact, we talked two months ago at length. He provided me with all kinds of nice drawings and diagrams. I told him the same thing. I'm telling you folks tonight, it's not the time for this project. We need to get back to basics and prioritize what we need to do to raise money, to educate our children, and to fix the stuff that we have now that relates directly to our educational mission. And I'm sorry, I'm a big fan of high school sports, but they cannot take a priority over making sure that our buildings are good and that our kids are educated. And every time you expand a project like this and add 25 to 35%, which is what this proposal is, it costs more money to keep those up. They will ultimately need repair and replace in the future. So we, we have a tendency to want to build this stuff because it's a great idea, but we oftentimes don't look at what it's going to cost us in the long run to maintain it. When you have a 6,000 square foot building, it costs more money to maintain than a 4,000 square foot building. It's axiomatic. I suspect it's not much different than with tennis courts, although as I said, I'm not an expert. Not the time, folks. We need to come up with a plan and we need to show the public that plan. And this is what we talk about when we talk about transparency. Thank you.
Anyone else like to address the board? Item number six, the consent agenda. 601, approve the minutes from the July meeting. 02 is the treasurer's report. 03 is employment. 04 is donations. And then the agenda, the additional 03 and 04, 05 is a statement of purgative, of purpose budget reports. 06 is stipends. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Mrs. Perry, please call the roll.
Mr. Whitman?
Yes.
Dr. Gase?
Yes.
Dr. McBride?
Yes.
Mr. Perez?
Yes.
Dr. Hoita?
Yes. Item seven, action items. 701, approve the revised board policy I-G-C-K and G-C-N-1, also known as A-F-C-1. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Mrs. Perry, please call the roll.
Mr. Whitman?
Yes.
Dr. Gase?
Yes.
Dr. McBride?
Yes.
Mr. Perez?
Yes.
Dr. Hoita?
Yes. 702, the athletic handbook for 2122. Is there a second? Dr. McBride, any discussion? Mrs. Perry, please call the roll.
Mr. Whitman?
Yes.
Dr. McBride?
Yes.
Mr. Perez?
Yes.
Dr. Gase?
Yes.
Dr. Hoita?
Yes. 703, the approve the educational service agreement with reserved school for the 2122 school year. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Any discussion? Mrs. Perry, please call the roll.
Mr. Whitman?
Yes.
Dr. McBride?
Yes.
Mr. Perez?
Yes.
Dr. Gase?
Yes.
Dr. Hoita?
Yes. 704, approve McWaters consulting agreement for the school quality improvement grant.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Mrs. Perry, please call the roll.
Mr. Whitman?
Yes.
Dr. Gase?
Yes.
Dr. McBride?
Yes.
Mr. Perez?
Yes.
Dr. Hoita?
Yes. 706, adopt the permanent appropriation resolution for fiscal year 2022.
And we need to go back to 705.
Did I miss five? I'm sorry. Approve the transportation agreement for the 2021 school year, 20, 2021, 2022 school year. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? Mrs. Perry, please call the roll.
Mr. Whitman?
Yes.
Mr. Perez? Dr. McBride?
Yes.
Dr. Gase?
Yes.
Dr. Hoita?
Yes. Now we'll do item 706. It's the adopt the permanent appropriation resolution for fiscal year 2022.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Mrs. Perry, please call the roll.
Mr. Whitman?
Yes.
Dr. Gase?
Yes.
Dr. McBride?
Yes.
Mr. Perez?
Yes.
Dr. Hoita?
Yes. Item 707, approve the Apex Learning Agreement for the 2122 school year. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Mrs. Perry, please call the roll.
Dr. Gase?
Yes.
Mr. Whitman?
Yes.
Dr. McBride?
Yes.
Mr. Perez?
Yes.
Dr. Hoita?
Yes. Item 708, approve the amendment to the services agreement with KnowledgeWorks.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Mrs. Perry, please call the roll.
Dr. Gase?
Yes.
Mr. Whitman?
Yes.
Dr. McBride?
Yes.
Mr. Perez?
Yes.
Dr. Hoita?
Yes. Item 7 09, approve the Garmin Miller agreement for provision of limited professional services.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion?
Yes. I will vote no because again, I think as Mr. Henry explained, it does call for a plan for eight courts. I can maybe go at six, five, but I need something that's going to pass and get built soon and is part of a plan, as he explained. We have leaking doors in this middle, in the capitorium here that we have, didn't fix last year, we've put off. We have science textbooks that we haven't replaced at the grade schools yet. But now we're looking at a plan for eight courts with an estimate of probably 800,000 plus a pavilion with I heard lights, stadium seating, the best tennis courts in the state of Ohio to outdo Norwalk is what I've heard. Norwalk built five courts, added it to the three they have existing now. That's how they got eight. They haven't decided whether they're going to maintain the other three or not in the future. But it's, we need to be more realistic and come up with a plan that we can actually build this year, not with something that's going to probably not happen. The, the kids here need something that's going to happen soon and get it done.
Just to comment on this, I fully support athletics and I understand that we are at a point where we need to make moves and address this for safety concerns. But I feel the timing needs to fall once we have a, a full plan in place that has involved the community as we work to build transparency, build trust, and as we have a long-term plan. I feel like without a plan in place that building or moving towards building lacks a little bit of insight.
Anyone else? I would just like to comment that if Dr. Zoller supports it and recommends it, then he's the leader of our district, so I'm going to support it. Any further discussion? Mrs. Perry, please call the roll.
Dr. Gase?
Yes.
Mr. Whitman?
Yes.
Dr. McBride?
No.
Mr. Perez?
No.
Dr. Hoita?
Yes. Item 710, approve Mansfield Psychological Services Agreement.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Mrs. Perry, please call the roll.
Mr. Whitman?
Yes.
Dr. Gase?
Yes.
Dr. McBride?
Yes.
Mr. Perez?
Yes.
Dr. Hoita?
Yes. Item 711, approve the TEA MOU.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Mrs. Perry, please call the roll.
Mr. Whitman?
Yes.
Dr. McBride?
Yes.
Mr. Perez?
Yes.
Dr. Gase?
Yes.
Dr. Hoita?
Yes. Item 712, approve the OAPSE Local 571 MOU. Is there? Go ahead.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Mrs. Perry, please call the roll.
Dr. McBride?
Yes.
Mr. Perez?
Yes.
Mr. Whitman?
Yes.
Dr. Gase?
Yes.
Dr. Hoita?
Yes. Let me pull up item 713 here. Item 713, approve the Wood County Juvenile Detention Center Agreement for fiscal year 2122. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? Mrs. Perry, please call the roll.
Dr. McBride?
Yes.
Mr. Perez?
Yes.
Mr. Whitman?
Yes.
Dr. Gase?
Yes.
Dr. Hoita?
Yes. Item 7.14, approve the PT Services Physical Occupational Therapy Agreement for fiscal year 2122.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Mrs. Perry, please call the roll.
Mr. Whitman?
Yes.
Dr. Gase?
Yes.
Dr. McBride?
Yes.
Mr. Perez?
Yes.
Dr. Hoita?
Yes. Item 7.15, approve the PT Services Speech Language Pathology Agreement, also for fiscal year 2122.
So moved.
Second.
Mrs. Perry, or I'm sorry, any discussion? Mrs. Perry, please call the roll.
Dr. McBride?
Yes.
Mr. Whitman?
Yes.
Mr. Perez?
Yes.
Dr. Gase?
Yes.
Dr. Hoita?
Yes. Okay, item eight. We've reached item eight, the opportunity for the public, the dialogue with the board.
the option to open up the third year, so they would reopen it before the third year actually happens.
Oh, yes, we're in year two of the year. When do negotiations or is dialogue start?
Typically, that would take place in the spring.
Okay. Mr. Whitman, you mentioned some things about some bus drivers that we're down to 44 routes from 52, is that right?
Let's take a look here. We had 44 home-to-school routes for this, to start this school year, and normally that was about 50 routes. So we're down, down a couple routes.
The primary driver for that was the company of the drivers, is that right?
Well, one of the issues that we have is that we, we have a shortage of bus drivers, meaning we are having a hard time recruiting them. The, the other concern was an issue just to reduce the amount of people that we bus and to revert back to board policy that was established, I'm not sure exactly when it was established, but to revert back to board policy for busing procedures.
Do we anticipate the challenges of recruiting drivers to continue? Do we anticipate fewer recruiting drivers as a group?
It's my understanding that it's harder and harder to recruit and retain bus drivers. I think we're doing a pretty good job. I think, I had seen Scotty where we, we did hire enough bus drivers to begin the school year. We don't have as many subs as we wish to have, but that we were actually fairly pleased with our recruiting process this past year.
The concern on my side there is that if it's a trend, right, we're, we're in our school, we're going to break that to a model of readiness, if you look at it now, that's pretty much all it is. So just concerned by that trend, and we're going to continue to do, we have 200 recruiters next year, right? So I think we're going to have some new passengers who are plus times. Here, really, a lot of the future, we'll be attempting in anticipation of the term. Finally, the tennis court, there was an interesting dialogue, right, so I appreciate some of the comments there. I think some of those items came up. There was the lending for the new school, it was about a year ago. And some of the justification with the new, the new buildings was that we had many items that were past the point of accepting work. And there's a lot of product that I realize, but I think, you know, as a, as a member of community, I'd be initially prepared for other items that have fit there, replace rather than repair. Or, right, so that's a common thing in any physical thing, right? You can, you can only be there some times, but I think there, if you let that, if you let that, that position grow, it builds a column that's hard to get out, right? If you have a fighting, the things you have, it's everything, all right? A house or, or a vehicle, you can always repair it from, you know, to, I think you like this, and you want some of this, because it sounds like you're very good together, but you're all for ages to see that. And, you know, finally, Mr. Henry's comments, bucketing the optics, I think it's somewhat ironic that they, you know, the discussion about optics, some of your survey results indicate communication, and the survey, unfortunately, went out to, it sounds like about 10 million of the community, you know, and staff, so there's a bit of irony there. I believe it speaks to, to lessen the, right? We're hearing this message, but we're not doing things there. I think that's what we need to start to make an issue here. We have a responsibility there, so that's forward to the community. We just need to start using that, but it's not personal. We just, to see as lovely around. So we encourage you to, to not take it personally. It's not about any group, or it's just how is the board acting as a group to push it. So please don't take this stuff personally, they are not, and they are just about perspicacity. So I hope not to.
Anyone else would like to dialogue with the board? Seeing none, we'll move on to item nine, board discussion.
Just to start the board discussion by, again, kind of harkening back to some of those things from the summer, hoping that we all, as a, as a group and as individuals, are taking these pieces to heart. I think we're starting to hear some of the same things over and over again, and I think that's on us as individuals and us as a group to address. So I'm hoping that we sit with that and we work to find ways to, to move forward with those, to do better for our community and our, and our district. One of the pieces that I think would be interesting to discuss is how are we, as a board, pushing information out? How are we meeting our community? How are we sharing some of that information? I know, you know, some boards do newsletters, or they do letters to the editor, like, they are engaging with social media. What are some of our options? Policy is that we don't speak as individuals, but we speak as a, as a unit. What have we done in the past that has worked well? Are there ways that we can be increasing communication? Or what have y'all seen be effective, or do you have ideas?
I think it's two things. One, it's information that is there, available, if the person chooses to go looking for it. And then there's other, the other way of looking at it is how much information you want to push to the community. And, and like it or not, it's, 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 it's a game. It's a politics game, because the, if you really want the information about how a district is doing, you can go back and look how we had failing grades five years ago. My first day, first meeting with the board, we were failing third grade literacy, F. And we have a B now. There's, I could go on. There's a bunch of things we've done exceedingly well in the last five years, and I don't think it takes very, you know, you don't need a survey. You look, parents are bringing their kids back into the district. That's the only survey that matters to me. I don't care what anybody says, as long as the parents are bringing students back to the district. That tells me we're doing a good job. I don't take that personally. I take that as a district, that we've done a good job of bringing the district back up, because parents are bringing their students back in. That's the only, that's the only survey that matters to me.
And I, I do think that is a really important indicator, but I also, I also care what, what our community says, what our, our staff says, what our teachers say, like, I think those pieces are important. And I think that, yes, that our team does a, the district team does a good job of putting that information out there, putting it on the website, but that, that doesn't mean that it's, that it's universally accessible. You know, like, some of those skills or some of that knowledge, I have a hard time finding our minutes. Thank heavens for Kelly Spar that she sends them to us. Like, I, I think there are other ways that, that we can meet that demand, or that we can personalize or break that down into more understandable pieces. You know, minutes aren't the most user-friendly document.
No, you're right.
So, like, I'm wondering what else, what else we can do, because I would much rather over-communicate than, than under-communicate. And I, I acknowledge that I'm the, the least senior member on the board, so I'm wondering if there's things we've seen be really effective, or, you know, Chris, you're involved at the state level. Are there things that other districts do, so we don't need to recreate a wheel, so that we can be increasing ways that we get information out?
I know I've had conversations with Dr. Hoida about, you know, the potential, how could we get information out to the public? Also had a brief conversation with Dr. Zoller when I met with him, and I think he has a good idea of some possibilities, and just got to give him a chance to, to get settled and to move forward. But that I know is one of the topics that we talked about when, when, when Mike and I met, and it's something I've talked to Jeff about as far as some ideas of, some potential. So I, I think that there's going to be some differences moving forward as far as how different city schools communicates to, to the public. We've, we've improved in, in a couple different areas. Specifically, our website is much better today than it was years ago. I think Michelle Tuitt did a very nice job of working hard to, to move that process along. And so as we work with the different components of our district, they've identified too that we need to do a better job in communicating. And then one of the other realities is that the Advertiser Tribune and other media outlets have fewer staff members to, to write and report what's going on. And so then is it our responsibility then to help supplement that? And that's kind of been some of the conversations I've been having with, with different individuals within our community. So, like I said, we got to, we got to give them a chance to, to settle in a little bit, but I think the, the work's already began.
Dr. McBride, I think that in terms of what the board communicates, I think at some point we have to get to the point that we're communicating with our superintendent, tells us his direction of our district. He's just settled in, and I know we had issues with the tennis court thing, but that's, I don't think that's going to happen in the future, because I think, as like Dr. Hoida said, is when he makes a recommendation, or she, whoever our superintendent is, they're the experts we put in there. And what I'd like to see from the board, and I'm, criticize all of us, including myself, is that we learn to address the superintendent. I've got minutes of a meeting that board members are directly directing other employees in terms of what they should do. That's something we should never do. This is his. We brought him here to lead this district. And so I think during the interviews, he mentioned that our job is going to be, to be ambassadors for the district. And it's going to be, you know, to hear, listen, bring back, but also to share what our district is doing. We provide oversight in terms of some of the decisions, but leadership has to come from our superintendent. He is the voice of the district, not us. It's him. That's what we hired him to do. And so that's what I think, you know, it, sorry, but we brought you in to make the message, and you've been doing a great job at this. I mean, in my perfect world, half the people wouldn't know who we were, but they would know who he was, and they would know who our school was. That's all that would matter.
Victor, to speak to that. If anybody isn't already following our superintendent on Twitter, his Twitter game is stellar. So it's been really awesome to see you at so many things and putting out so many things, and I think that is definitely a great start. And I know communication is one of the, the key pieces on your end, and I, I just really have appreciated that, and I've heard that from numerous community members in the last few weeks of what all you're putting out there. So thank you.
For board discussion, I do have a topic that I'd like to bring up. Last year, we changed the student delegate, so I'm going to ask for your input here. Previously, we used to have two, two board members. Then last year with the pandemic, Mr. Trisler recommended four, with each one getting a quarter due to the situation, it was something we hadn't done before, and that that would take turns and rotate. They only came during their quarter, only made the reports during that quarter. And nobody, I think we only had four applicants that year. This year, we've expanded again to four, and I think the board selects them. I don't think we actually have a policy on that, but I think something we should consider is, you guys are board representatives for the students. I think some, if it's possible, we should consider letting the students select their own board representatives to sit on the board. You know, that way they know that they've got the, the backing of the students, and that they answer to them, and they go back to them instead of feeling like they might have to owe us, or, you know, that they, you know, they have to come here and speak, but remember we're the ones that appointed them, versus being our equals and saying, no, we're the representatives of the students. And so I don't know if that's something that's done in other districts. I know we have our own student government, but then we also have this as separate. And it's great that we have four, and we actually have people that, other than four this year, that applied, but I think just trying to narrow that down to make, you know, a policy on that, and maybe involving them more in their own selection process.
To answer your question, I was involved when we began the program. It was a program that I became aware of through Ohio School Board Association. And at that point in time, the information that we gleaned was to have an application process, that we vet the, the students, interviewed by board members. I've, in some of the years I've participated in the interviewing, some of the years I haven't. Some of the years we've had several applicants, some years we, we don't have several applicants. But to answer your question, that's how it was addressed, or that's how it was brought to the district. I worked with the superintendent at the time, and we, we thought it was something that we should give a try. I think it's been very successful, having student represent, representatives on our board. And so I think this year we got some, some great students that are going to participate. We tweaked it up a little bit as far as having, building responsibilities, as far as then being able to report that to the board. We've got official committee assignments, participation. So I'm anxious to see how, how the year pans out, but I think it's, I think it's going to work pretty good.
Anything else?
I do like the idea of them being voted on. I think it can remove some of the power differential, but I also think that it can help us ensure that, you know, the, the student's voice is, is heard. I, I also love that we have four, and that, the, the building reports, I think that is a, a great piece. But I definitely, I like maybe looking at building a policy around it so that we, we have that in place, and getting your direction on, on how you've seen that done, or what's been effective in, in other places.
There's no need for an executive session? Moving on, next item is item 12, would be adjournment. So moved.
Second.
Mrs. Perry, please call the roll.
Mr. Perez?
Yes.
Dr. McBride?
Yes.
Mr. Whitman?
Yes.
Dr. Gase?
Yes.
Dr. Hoida?
Yes. The next regular meeting will be on September 28, 2021, at 6:00 PM in the Tiflum Middle School Cafeteria. Thank you for attending.[1502.14]